Of the Neshova Regional School Committee to order and our usual uh flag bearer, uh Steve Rubenstein. Is not here, so I want you to in your mind's eye imagine the stars and stripes please rise if you so choose for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, um, thank you everyone for being here this evening. Uh we have one item on our agenda unfinished business learning model after the holiday break. So um by way of introduction to tonight's topic, I'd like to do a quick review. Um, so at a special school committee meeting in August, on August tenth to be exact twenty twenty. The school committee voted to adopt a hybrid model for the K eight schools with an option. To learn remotely and that became the Remote Learning Academy. At our November eighteenth meeting, the school committee took up the topic of going remote during the holidays. Um at that time districts were considering being remote from Thanksgiving through the middle of January. But we decided to stay the course, meaning that K eight would remain in the hybrid mode. But should the buildings of building principal um. Not be able to adequately staff their school because of absenteeism. That would trigger a a decision for that building um to go remote. So again, we brought this up at our um. November eighteenth meeting and also at that meeting. Um on November eighteenth, we asked that parents have a contingency plan should the need arise to move a school to the remote model. Additionally, we said that we would revisit this decision as need be. So at our regular meeting last week on December sixteenth, the topic was raised again. Um do in part or mostly because of the post Thanksgiving surge of COVID cases. And the predicted surge of COVID infections um predicted after the December vacation. Uh we're also aware that many school districts were making the decision to move to a remote model after the vacation preemptively. Their remote schedules were finite for the most part, ending either January eleventh or nineteenth. So uh we scheduled a special meeting, this meeting tonight. To revisit the decision we made back in November. Um as of uh four thirty this afternoon, five thirty this afternoon, we had received. Ninety-eight emails from parents representing both sides of the issue. Uh given the number of emails we've received and responded to, I believe we have a pretty good idea. Of the thoughts, concerns, and questions um of the members of our school community. So um we have three options that we can consider. The first option is to stay the course, maintain the status quo. With the understanding, the same thing as we said back in November. Uh that a decision to go remote would be made on a school by school basis depending on the school's ability. To adequately staff their buildings. So that's what we decided to do back in November. The other option would be to go full remote on January fourth in the K eights. And return to our hot our hybrid model on January eleventh. The third option would be to go to full remote on January fourth and we return to our hybrid model on January nineteenth. Um if we stay the course, it's important to note the following. Um doesn't mean we still won't find ourselves in a potential full remote situation. Depending upon what happens after the break. If we have clusters or our numbers are too high, it may not even be our decision at the time. Maybe the Board of Health, the state, we really can't predict. If we need to pivot, then it will be so on a dime, so to speak, with no real um forewarning. And it will definitely uh be as a reactive measure. Uh another thing that's important to note, if a school principal finds that he or she cannot adequately staff their building. Due to teacher or staff absenteeism. The decision for that school to go remote will be made by the principal and the superintendent. Because that decision will have to be made on the spot depending on the myriad of factors that present. And right now, we simply have no idea what that could even look like. So that's our background. Uh this is how I would like to proceed. I'd like to poll the school committee to see which option each member is in favor of. If a majority is in favor of the status quo with the caveats mentioned, then we don't have to do anything. If majority is in favor of option two, remote until January fourth. That would require a vote of the committee to change the model we adopted back on August tenth. If a majority is in favor of option three, remote until um. Uh January nineteenth, that would also require a vote of the committee to change the model we adopted. So if there are no objections, that is how I would like to proceed at this point. Mary.
Just have one question, Kathy.
Yeah.
In polling, would we be able to just give some reasons for, uh or do you just want a strict poll?
I would really just like a strict poll if we if 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 it says a clear consensus. I think that we just move to the next part of the this the presentation. Um but I'm just polling, we're not really discussing. I just want to see where where everybody's at. We've I'm uh you know, I know everybody probably has their own opinion. I know that folks have heard from constituents. And um is that okay with everybody to proceed in that manner? Leah.
So because we're down one person, are you looking, so our majority is still six, is six, right?
That's correct. Okay. Any other? Okay. Here we go. So option one is status quo with the caveats mentioned. Option two is remote from January fourth to January eleventh. Option three is full remote, January fourth to January nineteenth. So I am going to start with Leah.
Option one.
Elaine.
Um I actually don't have strong personal opinions on this, so I would go with the majority. Um so option one is fine.
Steve is absent. Sharon.
I feel undecided as well.
And does that mean what? You don't?
I I can go with um whatever the majority feels is the right way to go.
Thank you. Mary.
Option one, and I hope we will have a chance to talk a little bit about it afterwards.
Just a little bit, a little bit like. We have, this is our fourth meeting in December. I'm trying to cut back.
I know.
All right, Mike.
Sorry, um I'm leaning towards option one. I would agree with um Mary, however, I I would like to have a. Relatively brief discussion of all viewpoints.
Okay, Joseph.
Uh thank you, Aunt Sharon. Uh just a quick question. I know you want to keep this short and sweet, but. See, we're polling the 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 committee before the administration gives their presentation. That's what you want a consensus before the the administration presents?
The the um administration's presentation is to illustrate what a a a remote model would look like. So if we vote to maintain the status quo, but then a school needs to pivot to remote, that's what it will look like. If we decide to go to full remote, it'll look like the same thing. So it's not any kind of a. Um method to persuade its information. So um I know that it went out yesterday. I don't know if folks had a chance to see it. So that's the purpose of that. We'll see that at the end of this process.
All right, for purposes poll, then I would I would just adopt the option one.
Rich. He's holding up a number one, let the record show. Brett.
Option one.
Amy.
Uh option one, but I'd be interested in the discussion as well.
And me, option one. Okay, so clearly there is a preference via consensus of the committee. To maintain the status quo. Um which would mean that we would continue what we're doing and should the need arise. Um to move to remote, it would be done building by building. Um and that decision would be made by the building principal with the superintendent. Okay, now it is six eleven. I am going to allow discussion for fifteen minutes if there are no objections. I'm looking to see if there are any objections. Okay, so let's see. Oh wait, Mike.
So ho- hold on, we're we're going to have a presentation.
Wait, now and then discuss?
And then, I no, 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 I'm just trying to clarify. We're having, at some point, we're gonna have a presentation and then we're only gonna discuss for fifteen minutes.
Well, well, it's up to you guys. This is a special meeting. Our last meeting clocked in at over four hours.
Just seeking clarification.
All right, no, if you want to set the time for discussion.
No.
I will defer to the wishes of the committee. Does anyone have, but I think we ought to have a time limit.
Yeah, I'm just just asking for clarification, that's all.
Okay, so what do you think about time, Mike?
Uh I think I've been to a lot of meetings. Um I want to see the presentation. I'd like to hear some uh viewpoints that are different from my own, but I also don't want this to go on forever. Um I don't know that truncating the meeting or the discussion for fifteen minutes. Uh I I don't know. I'm just, I just.
Well, I'd like to hear from other people. Mary, thank you, Mike. Thank you. Yes, Mary.
So what I wanted to do was just to give some of the reasons, uh and this wouldn't have to do with the presentation. Of what the schedule would look like. Um so that's why I'd rather that a short discussion would happen right now.
Okay.
Perhaps it could be another short discussion, but I mean, I really, really did try. I planned out what I was going to say and I even have it written down. So I think it should be brief.
Okay, no, and again, I'm not trying to cut anybody off. I want to be sensitive to. The time that we spend as a committee, again, not that it's hasn't been some of the best times of my life. Um but it is the holiday season and my husband is loose in the house. But a lot of cookies that need to go to people, so I, you know, I have to listen to see what's going on in the other room. So this is what I would like to do. Um I have my list. So if you want to speak or give, say something, so I know Mary and Mike do, who else would like to speak? Anne Richecca would, and who else? Oh, wait.
I just had a quick point of order. Could we hear the presentation from the administration first?
Sure, and but right now, who wants to speak? So I'm just keeping Amy. Anyone else? All right, so at this time, I will turn it over to Brooke. Oh, you gotta unmute Brooke.
Sure, thank you. And if Todd and Alita can get the uh screen set up here so we can um share the screen, that would be terrific. And Todd and I will walk you through. Um in in essence, the um presentation that you're looking at has been. Something that has been growing and evolving with our administrative team um over the last. Last several weeks and one of the things, of course, that's important to us always is that we keep a level of continuity across the district, no matter what building you're in. And so a lot of this started off as just as principals coming to agreement, coming to consensus, what does this look like? And so the the bones of this really started um there and then we were able to kind of take that and um. Work out for this evening. I'm gonna have Todd start to go through it with you and then we'll have it open for questions, but. Um Todd, I know that you and the principals have worked diligently on this, so I'm gonna ask you to start off, please.
Um okay, so we work with the principals just to try to create, you know, some specificity around what a full remote learning model would look like. Um should we need to move um to that for our K through eight, knowing that our high school is already in a full remote model? So just um a couple of quick slides here, but. The baseline for for K through eight would be that, you know, both cohorts would then be combined. So at the base of it of it all, we'd be able to combine cohorts. Um so that cohort A and cohort B could be working together with the teacher because everyone would be in a full remote. Um model. Uh our Wednesday schedule would say stay the same to preserve the necessary team, teacher and planning time. Um in a focus on SEL, Special Education Services um that are scheduled will remain the same. As well as with related arts. Um related arts teachers, however, would continue to see their classes in the cohort models. Would then, we're then focused on moving towards the that new SLT um. Uh model that will be put into place um on January nineteenth, so we'd be working towards a total of forty. Hours over two weeks of synchronous learning, um twenty hours per week on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. For instructional synchronous, instructional blocks in math, writing, reading, science, and social studies. For a total of a hundred and eighty minutes. Still thirty-five minutes focused on related arts and fifty-five minutes focused on social emotional learning that includes morning meeting. Read alouds and end of the day wrap ups. And then each day would also include um time for lunch recess and also screen breaks, because if you recall. Earlier in the summer when we were focused on these models, we there was really a big concern around, you know, making sure the kids were not on. You know, six hours of screen time every day and wanting to certainly diversify asynchronous with synchronous as well as some break time, so. Um that's what the the K through five model would look like. Um and then the six through eight model really isn't isn't too different. You know, we tried to mirror them. Um but really with that focus on making sure that we're gonna be meeting that new synchronous learning time. That will go into place with those that new um policy that was just voted on last week. So again, cohorts will be combined at the middle school. Wednesday's schedule would stay the same. Related arts, however, would remain in the trimester rotating model and those cohorts would be combined for our students at the middle school. Forty hours over two weeks of learning with forty-five minute instructional blocks as well. Um focused on math, ELA, science, social studies, and of course, our eighth grade students. Uh participate in Spanish, related arts on each day. As well as our social emotional learning time focused around homeroom and advisory. Our middle schools have a strong focus on advisory programs. Um and then special education services could continue, however slight scheduling revisions would need to be made. And altered to accommodate a a new remote schedule at um the middle school. The schedule also includes lunch and scheduled breaks between classes. And we would also continue our remote instrumental music that would also continue at the middle school, because you'll note at our middle school level, we are. Um doing instrumental music and band um right now, so which is considered to be synchronous time as well. So those are the two models. They're very pretty similar. Um but again, um that time on this Wednesday. Making a half a day for our students and teachers are giving our teachers. Time in the afternoon to be working on really that strong focus on the the forty hour. Um requirement that's gonna be going into effect on the nineteenth and it's gonna give those teachers some time to really start doing some tweaking around. Those um instructional blocks, particularly in um the curriculum associated with math, ELA, science, and social studies, so. And then just the last slide here really focuses on special education and I know Joan Joan has joined us um tonight too. In case there were any specific questions around special education, you know, our special education students are coming in four days a week, full time. Um Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, they right now have six hours of synchronous instruction during the day. Um and so we'd be recommending that all of our pre-K programs, along with our friends program, friends one and two. Pace at the high school or middle school program and transitions uh to still come in person those four days a week. Because of the progress that those students are making in those programs. Um our class connections, our middle connections class, early rise and rise would move to a hybrid model of two days of in-person support during this period. If we were to go remote during this period, and that's a big if. Um elementary special education services um continue to be the same, delivered virtually. Same with middle school, delivered virtually. And then evaluations for students would be conducted in person where and when possible, and I know that's um. You know, a policy that's going a lot going on in multiple districts across the Commonwealth and getting students in. In in person for any sort of evaluations that are that are taking place. Our English language learners would move to remote. We have about half of our ELL students coming in right now, those who are some of our neatest students. But they would move to um full remote in this model. And then any related service product providers would utilize Zoom and Google Meet for their services, um and certainly based upon privacy concerns, so. That's kind of the the overview of of the model, the principals and I and Joan, and we we worked on this to really, the basis is really to just. Combine cohorts in those major instructional model time so that we could really beef up that synchronous learning time. Um without major changes in any of the other areas, so. And if Joan wants to add anything to that, please feel free.
So the only thing, yes, that I would add is that um special ed, as we know, is complex and. Um although we have that hybrid model for class and um middle connections and early rise and rise. Uh we would be looking for some flexibility to really look at. Um who needs up to two days or who might need more depending on, you know, what's happening with those students. These are our highest need students in the district, so we would. Um the principals and I have, you know, said we would need some flexibility. Maybe some students would need to come in more than those um days.
I think Kathy, just a as a generality, um you know, when I was reading some of the emails this weekend, I I want to be really clear. This is not something that's specific to Neshova. All school districts are having this discussion right now about uh post uh winter break. It this is not a show of specific, but each school district is dealing with it a little bit differently in terms of whether the superintendent's making the decision. The school committee's making the decision, but discussion period about what to do post-winter break. Is going on across the Commonwealth right now, so I just want to be clear on that too.
Thank you. So um let's start. If anyone has any questions about the the schedule that was presented, let's start there. And um hang on, I need to get everybody so I can see everybody. What, why can't I zoom everybody? There we go. Okay, um so um let me see if you have any questions about the presentation first. Raise your hand and so then I can see. Who's got questions and then I can go down the list. Okay, I can come back if you need to think about it. So right now, um Mary, Mike, and Amy would like to speak. Anyone else for the the cue to speak? If you change your mind, I will circle around after these folks have an opportunity. Mary.
Thank you. So um just to explain a little bit about why I. Position is to keep the K K eight hybrid as is. What we've seen is there's a lower risk for younger students than high school and college age. Uh developmental differences contribute to the lower risk for younger students. They're able to demonstrate, and they have, uh better compliance with safety measures and teachers are better able to, and I hate to use the word control. So let's just say contain interactions. Uh we know that there are studies in Europe, Europe in many ways is ahead of us, smaller populations. Um and um perhaps better um government on the on the federal level. Anyway, being able to make decisions and the studies have shown less risk for younger students in terms of transmission and spread. Now, we heard from many parents on on both sides of this, but in no case did any parent say. I plan to um I plan to just celebrate the holidays as I've always celebrated them and uh, you know. And not care about COVID spread. To the contrary, most of the parents said to us that we're making sacrifices. Uh for these particular holidays and. And so in making those sacrifices to make things as safe as possible for our 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 children. We we really would like the hybrid to be able to continue. So I just had one piece of advice to parents. And that would be that if you are making those sacrifices, going along with what the governor says, what common sense says, what the. Uh the timeframe between Thanksgiving and when um students went back to school and projecting that to after the holidays. Uh the several holidays to what things will be like. the several holidays to what things will be like. Parents, what you can do is you can talk to your friends and you can explain what you're doing, the sacrifices that you're making. And you can ask them what they're doing. And if they say that they are going to be celebrating, traveling, et cetera, then you can use your voice and say to them, then if you make that decision, then your family should really quarantine when you come back and not come to school because we're doing everything we possibly can to make it safe for all of our children. So that's that's what I wanted to say to parents. You do have some control, the decisions you are making to keep things safe. I applaud and I ask you to use your voice and talk to your friends and see if you can make that more universal. Thank you.
Mary, thank you. So well said and well organized. Appreciate your your comments. Mike?
Yep. So just a couple of brief questions. It shouldn't take long. First, I just want to start off by thanking all of the parents who decided to express themselves and to share their voices about their concerns and their comments. I think it was kind of explicitly asked of them. And, you know, we had upwards of a hundred people that responded. So just wanted to say outwardly that I very much appreciate the effort that went into it. Just two questions on the presentation from Dr. McGuire. And this is really more for our audience, Dr. McGuire, but can we just confirm that this plan to pivot to remote if and when it does occur that you've presented is what it's going to look like? It's not specific to this particular event. It's what will it will look like if and when a remote pivot ends up occurring?
That's correct. When and if we were to move to a remote model, and I even met with the principals again today, because certainly that forty hours of instructional time would be a change. And we talked at length this morning about whether or not that would be something we need to like slowly transition to. And before coming into this meeting, they felt very confident, all three of the elementary principals, that that would be something that they could move to and certainly something that we're going to be working on on Wednesday, which is why we scheduled that early release and professional development time for teachers in the afternoon.
Great. Thank you for that. And the only other question I had was in the presentation, you had mentioned that in a potential remote model such as this, in the plan that you offered, cohort A and cohort B would be combined into a single remote cohort. But just to be clear, that that would not change the learning experience of those who are currently enrolled in the Remote Learning Academy?
Correct. We would not be, you know, we wouldn't change, want to change Remote Learning Academy teachers and move them to a model with a teacher and peers that they that we would see that as probably a more difficult change for those kids especially.
Right, great. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Amy?
Yeah, Mike and Mary stole my thunder. They they already hit on my points.
I'm not let you go first, Amy.
I just, I really wanted to be able to express my gratitude for the plan that was presented so we can conceptualize what a transition to full remote would look like. If we ever find ourselves in that situation, it was super helpful for me. And I also wanted to give a shout out to all the parents who emailed us and provided their input. And I'm sure that they're breathing a huge sigh of relief. Because I think the majority of the emails we got were in favor of maintaining the status quo. So thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Other thoughts?
Yeah, just a quick thought too. One of the things that I really appreciated about some of the emails that came in too was the acknowledgement of the amount of work that the district has taken, our staff, our administration, facilities, et cetera. Mitigation endeavors, you know, and I also, I don't know if it was Amy who had said this, but somebody else had said the fact that parents, and I think Mary, you had alluded to it, to parents and students are working so hard at trying to keep all of us safe as much as the school district is. And so I really appreciate that. And I think that that is so critical as we move forward that we continue on this. And it was I I felt sad as I was reading some of the emails because I think that some parents felt that this could potentially be punitive. That was never the intent. The discussion just happened as a course of process, tonight's discussion. It was never ever about anything being punitive. And I think, I think just the opposite. I think that our school district and I think our parents and our communities have simply done an amazing job. And, you know, I I think if you asked us if we ever felt that we would get this far in the month of December, I think a lot of us are surprised and but pleasantly pleasantly surprised that we're here. There are days, though, I'm not going to lie, when I want to put the COVID white flag up and say, I surrender. I'm surrendering to COVID because we don't know what else to do because it's just, it's just so complex and so layered. But I am so appreciative of our parents and our students who are doing an amazing job in the classroom and our teachers and principals for keeping it all going. It it's just, it it has been tremendous to watch play out.
Thanks, Brooke.
Thank you.
Other comments, thoughts? Nate?
Thanks. I just wanted to say that even though we're planning on continuing for hybrid, I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer because I know there was a lot of uplifting voices that were just heard here, but it doesn't mean that something won't happen and we will have to, as a building, as a grade level, as a district, like switch very quickly. I was, I saw a lot of emails that said that even the discussion tonight was happening too fast for parents to be able to make childcare changes. And I understand that, but the virus is going to dictate things, especially in January. The forecasts are looking at a peak late January. And so this may have to happen overnight. So I would just encourage everyone to have contingency plans in place. There's a risk reward to this, right? The the reward is that potentially we may never need it. But the risk is that if it happens, a shutdown happens, it's going to happen really quickly. And I just, I just think it's important for everyone watching to be really aware of that, that it will be a disruptive abrupt change if it happens.
Well said.
No, I think that we have to look at the the practical side of it. Too. I mean, as Brooke pointed out, we've been lucky so far edging along. And I know a lot of districts have decided to act preemptively. And that's why it it came to this level. So we can hopefully make a decision that reflects the the best interest of our school community, the Neshova school community. So thanks. Other comments? Joseph?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's not a comment, it's actually more of a question. And but I will preface it with a comment by saying, I think that the seeds of this discussion were sown back in November. And if memory serves, I want to say that the committee heard from the Assistant Superintendent in regard to some pre-Thanksgiving requests that were coming in regarding requests for leaves from both students and from faculty. And I'm wondering if the superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent could could have given us a little status report on what transpired at and after Thanksgiving in regards to those requests. Because that was a big reason why I thought this was a proper discussion right now, based on what I heard last month. So I don't, I'm not really sure I heard what what the end result was of all those requests back last month. So if either the superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent could enlighten me, I'd be most appreciative. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And actually, thank you, Joseph. And I think actually we'll we'll turn that to Anne Marie. And I think one of the other big changes for us, Joseph, that's coming is the halt of the FCC RA. However, with that said, if the stimulus package that they're talking about now comes through, that may present a whole other thing that we we don't even know about right now. So because that's really what happened before. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is the jury probably in some ways will still be out a little bit in terms of projecting forward. But Anne Marie, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, Brooke, that's right. The the FFCRA, Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, provides some pay for our staff members who are quarantined or who are staying home to take care of children during this time because their school or their daycare is closed. And that expires on December thirty first unless it's extended. There's a lot of buzz today as to whether or not the package that passed last night extends it and extends it in the same fashion. But there's a, there's a lot of complexities to it. It's it's quite likely that even if it is extended, people might have used up the totality of their benefit and up through December thirty first and won't have any leave left. So we have gotten several, I'd say probably three or four or five requests from staff members, you know, what what are my options, you know, for leave after January, when we go back on January fourth? And that's where we stand, you know, assuming that there's nothing in that bill there. There there aren't a lot of options except for perhaps taking an unpaid leave of absence or or something, or something like that, if they decide that they are unable to find care for their children. And then of course, if they're quarantined, then, you know, then then we have something in place for that.
Joseph, did that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, mostly. But I I was often wondering about, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong. I thought I'd heard that the Assistant Superintendent had reported that there were also some parents who were looking to take their children out of school at or after Thanksgiving.
I I can speak to that too. In terms of the children being removed, yes, we definitely saw an uptick in children not attending school between Thanksgiving and December. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but we saw an uptick in that in all of our buildings.
Thank you.
Other, Rich?
I just want to say thanks to all the administrators and the teachers. You don't really get a they don't get a lot of credit when you avoid a crisis. So the fact that things have been running so well. You know, I think it's sometimes it's hard to acknowledge that. You kind of want to go after the problems, right? So I think the fact that there has been little disruption and things have went well, I think speaks a lot to the good planning and the execution by the by the administration of the staff. And it did want, it did lend me to think about another thing. So you know, if staffing is going to be an issue, could be an issue, what could we do to beef up the potential substitute pool? And I've sort of asking this, I'm asking this to Brooke, but I'm really like talking to parents. So, you know, I've heard, I've heard parents say in other calls with me, and especially the listening session, oh, I would volunteer to do that. And I know there's a, there's a number of hurdles parents have to jump through, like getting fingerprinted and so forth. But I just wanted to sort of put kind of a PSA out there that if there are steps, we can talk about recruiting people or they could offer. You know, for instance, I'm sure I would take a day off and 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 come in and, you know, even donate the money to the PTO, for instance. So I'm sure there's lots of other people do that too.
Or Anne Marie can probably just touch base on that because I know that we've had a lot of discussion about that. But this isn't even our first year to have that type of discussion, to be honest with you, Rich. And by the way, thank you so much for the kind words. That's so appreciated by our administrative team who have worked so diligently since March thirteen. So thank you for that. So Anne Marie and I've had this discussion, and I know that our principals have all tried different things. Some have been a little bit more focused, some have done all kinds of different things. I mean, I think that Gary Kozloski is doing all kinds of different things this year in Bolton. He's been incredibly creative. And I know Joel said something out the other day to us, to Anne Marie and I, saying, you know, that they felt really good about the position that they were finding themselves in as a result of his creativity. So, Rich, you're exactly right. That is certainly uppermost on our minds. So Anne Marie, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Everybody's in the same boat, Rich, and school committee members. Every district in the world is in need of subs. And this is coming at a time where most, a lot of our substitutes are retired teachers or people who they themselves are taking a step back for a while because of their own concern for their own health. The principals have reached out. Gary Kozloski, I I think he's standing out there on one seventeen and stopping cars, you know, trying to find people who will be willing to sub. And and all of the principals have made outreach to their to their parents. And Rich is right about this too. The the snag comes when people say, oh, sure, I'll do it. But then they're told that they they need to, we need to do two things for the for the safety of the children. We do a Cory check. That's easy. It's a piece of paper and it comes back almost instantaneously. The other thing that we need to do is is the fingerprinting and that costs thirty-five dollars. We have to make an appointment. We have to journey to the place where the fingerprints are taken and and then wait for the results to come back. So that's a bit of a like a bridge too far for some people. They don't want to be bothered. This is not a good time of year for people to have one more thing added to their plates. You know, so that's slowing us down. Also too, there was a period of time, a little bit earlier this year, that I'd say it was probably a two, three week period, seemed like forever, where every day I was on the phone with went to school spring, which is where people apply for jobs. And every day I made an appointment to outreach to ten people who are unsuccessful applicants for our positions to see if they would be available, you know, to to work in substance, if they would have any interest. And also I made personal outreach to each of the people who run our substitute list. You know, but who weren't actively subbing to try, you know, ask if they had any questions about the precautions we were taking, you know, and all that and all that. It's just a, it's just a terrible time to find substitutes.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And I guess the one thing I'd say is, you know, there's, we got over a hundred emails, most of them in support of hybrid. So I'm guessing that all those people could probably donate a day to come in and do it. So for the people that are listening into the call, you know, let's, let's go get Cory'd and potentially fingerprinted to see if you can be available. I don't know if people can turn on a dime for this, right? I mean, sometimes it's unsuspecting, but maybe for the ones that where the teachers know they're going to be out, you could potentially schedule a parent.
Donating a day is is a little bit hard because there's more than just sign them up and bring them in. You know, in this day and age, we need to make sure that they've received training on a bunch of different things, including our COVID protocols and what they need to do. We put them through an abbreviated Alice training because that's still important. So that it's, it's I joke when I say that you could just grab someone off of one seventeen and throw them in the in the classroom because there's really a bit of legwork that comes into it. And if the person is going to work for us for one day, you know, the risk reward, you know, might not. But we would love to have people who would be willing to commit to us, you know, to some steady substituting.
Thank you very much. Chris Tharnell, I hope you heard that.
Other comments, questions for anyone? I am seeing no hands. So if we are to summarize, we have decided to stay the course with the understanding that should circumstances dictate, the superintendent and the building principal will make a decision relative to the need to go to remote, which will be communicated to the school committee. But at that point, the decision rests with them because in all likelihood, it'll have to be a on the spot decision. I also want to thank all the parents that emailed us with their their thoughts, their questions, their concerns. And also it was nice to read their appreciation for the work that is being done by the teachers and administrators. And if you also was appreciative of the work of the school committee, which is always nice to hear. But thanks to everyone. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I want to thank everyone. I know there are a lot of jokes about twenty twenty, what a year it's been. And I won't make any jokes. But I, in all seriousness, want to thank everybody for the work you all have done. The dedication, the time. I know I talk about numbers of meetings, but if we look at numbers of hours, it's just phenomenal. So the dedication of this school committee is just it can't can't be overstated. So thank you. Thank you for being responsive to the to our constituents. Thanks, Brooke, to you and to all the members of your administrative leadership team. And also, I can't say enough about the caring professionals, teachers, faculty, staff and principals who makes such a difference for all our students. So and and then the other thing I want to say is that it's, we've been here for forty-five minutes. We're ready to adjourn. So I'm going to go out on a limb here and say the reason our meetings have been going so long is because of Steve Rubenstein. He's not here. We're able to sit, get everything done. Don't tell him I said that. He's not here. We're able to sit, get everything done. Um, don't tell him I said that. Um, I just keep it among us, but anyway, thank you. I want everybody just to have the the best, take a break. Um, please, um, and enjoy your family, enjoy whatever part of the the break and holiday. That you can. We'll be back to work um, as a committee in January, but thank you. Um, I couldn't uh, do the workers' chair that I do without your support, your input, uh, your feedback. So thank you so much. And with that, if there are no other statements. Then without objection, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at six forty six.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the second, wait, we're held up two fingers. I'm going to let him second. Words, pictures and numbers. Okay, um, I'm going to call the role for uh, to adjourn. Um, uh, Elaine?
Yes, and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
It's six forty five. It actually feels too early. I'm almost inclined to say no.
Okay, Mike said no.
I'll say yes.
And I. Uh, Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes, happy holidays.
Uh, Brett?
Yes.
Uh, Amy?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. And Mrs. Verrito, you get the last word.
Yes, and happy holidays to everyone in Neshova.
Very good. Thanks, Alita. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Happy holidays.
Bye.